Okay, good afternoon. The time is 1:30 PM on Thursday, April 1st, 2021. It's another beautiful day here in paradise and I hereby call to order the regularly scheduled Monday, monthly meeting for the City of West Palm Beach Zoning Board of Appeals. I'll ask Madam Secretary at this time to please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan.
Here.
Christopher Cammera. Let the record reflect that Christopher Cammera is not present. Malika Barlow.
Present.
Michael Hyman.
Present.
Michael Wood.
Present.
Alfred Fields.
Present.
Jonathan Burgess. Let the record reflect that Jonathan Burgess is not present.
Okay, thank you. I believe that constitutes a quorum and then first alternate fields then would be serving as a voting member due to Vice Chair Cammerer's absence. Okay, with that, we'll move into the Pledge of Allegiance. So please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
For the United States of America and to the republic.
For which we stand.
One nation under God.
Indescribable liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now we'd move to the approval of the minutes for the last zoning Board of Appeals meeting, which was on March 4th, 2021. The minutes were included in our packet, so hopefully everyone's had a chance to read them. At this time, if you have any corrections, additions, or changes to the minutes, please state that, otherwise I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll say both.
Second.
Okay. Believe the motion was made by Board Member Hyman and seconded by Board Member Fields. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to item three on the agenda, a report from the zoning staff. John?
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you again for your patience with the virtual meetings and things seem to continue to move smoothly with regards to that. So actually, I don't have any special announcements to make other than happy April Fool's Day. So unfortunately, we do have a meeting today, so.
Great. Well, thank you very much, John. We'll move on to remarks from the chairperson. So I'll just go on with the regular remarks regarding the virtual public meetings. Pursuant to Mayor Keith A. James's Executive Order Number 2020-05 issued on April 2nd, 2020, the City of West Palm Beach's boards and committees are conducting meetings through media technology and have released the requirements to have a quorum of its members present at City Hall. On April 14th, 2020, Mayor Keith A. James issued Executive Order Number 2020-09, which specifically provides the rules of procedure for conducting city meetings, including requirements for quasi judicial hearings. To ensure the availability to the public to continue to participate in this public hearing is being streamed live and available for viewing in the City Commission chambers located at City Center, 401 Clemata Street, on the condition that social distancing be practiced. Additionally, for those wishing to access the meeting remotely, they are able to do so directly through the applicable Zoom webinar link, as well as the city's usual media channels, including West Palm Beach TV 18, the city's website, and the city's YouTube, Facebook, and Twitter feeds. Anyone from the public who would like to provide comment on an agenda item is able to do so through the following: either in the City Center Flagler Gallery, or by dialing 561-320-6482 and leaving a voicemail not to exceed three minutes, or sending an email or video recording to zbapubliccomment@wpb.org, or completing the online public comment form at www.wpb.org-publiccomments. Those accessing the meeting directly through Zoom may also use the Q and A or the raise hand features. Anyone accessing just the Zoom audio using their phone may raise their hand by pressing star nine. Regardless of the method, please be sure to indicate the agenda number or the case number for which you're providing comment. Everyone providing testimony must have video capability and will need to be sworn in. The swearing in will occur at the start of each case on the agenda. If you're about to provide testimony and we're not sworn in, please make sure to indicate such and be sworn in before offering your testimony. After the applicant presents their case, staff will provide a presentation and then the public will have the opportunity to speak or have their comments read into the record from previously received correspondence. The board will then go into executive session. Prior to rendering a decision, the board will confirm that no additional public comments have been received by staff. For the members of the board, it is emphasized that Florida sunshine laws are applicable and you may not use the chat feature or any other form of individual communication to discuss matters with other board members, the applicant, or the general public during the meeting. With that, those conclude my remarks as chairperson. So we'll move on to item five in the agenda, which is a declaration of ex parte communication. For that, I'll go down the list, board members, to just have you each one by one indicate if you've had ex parte communication on either the two items that are on today's agenda. So I'll first start with Board Member Barlow.
I have had none, but I do want to put on the record that Kelly Quinn, who's the executive assistant to Zachara Ralas, I'm not trying to pronounce it, the second case number 3382, sent me an email inviting me to have a discussion on this case. But again, I did not respond or take them up on the invitation.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Hyman?
Yes, I too would like to parrot Member Barlow's comments of being contacted regarding to someone wanting to set up a meeting. I did respond to that indicating that I was not available to meet prior to this meeting.
Okay. See, Board Member Wood?
I also was contacted by Kelly Quinn about a telephone conversation with Ellie Zacharides, and I actually did have that conversation with her this morning. However, that would not affect my ability to vote today.
Thank you. Board Member Fields?
Good morning. I, good afternoon. I did too have a conversation with Ellie Zacharides on yesterday and the discussion specifically on that case and did not and will not affect my ability to participate in the discussion and hearing of this case.
Thank you. Thank you. And then myself, I also had a virtual meeting with Ellie Zacharides representing case number 3382, the second item on our agenda today. That meeting was informational in nature and will not impact my ability to render a decision on today's case based on the competent substantial evidence and today's testimony and in the material and our backup. Therefore, based on that, we'll go ahead and move on into the agenda to the public hearing portion of the agenda. So we'll start off with the swearing in of the speakers for case number, well, I guess, let me back up. There are no continued cases. So we're moving into the first item on the agenda and we'll have, as soon as John's able to get them in the room, we'll have our Board Secretary swear in the speakers on case number 3385.
Mr. Chair, that should be everybody. John Schmidt, you'll just need to unmute, turn on your camera.
I'm actually sitting in for John Schmidt today.
Okay. Someone else also logged in as John? I don't know if that's your client?
I believe it was. I think you'd sent them a follow-up email with the link.
I mean, I let them in so they can just turn on their video and audio.
Okay. Tom, if you're there, you can turn on your video and audio.
There you go. Okay. Mr. Chair, I believe that's everybody.
Would you raise your right hand to be sworn in, please? You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll first start off then with a presentation from the applicant. Or actually, I'm sorry, I need the Board Secretary to read the item into the, into the record. I apologize.
A request by John Schmidt on behalf of Mark Buller for a variance from Section 94-174, B6 of the City's Zoning and Land Development Regulations, to reduce the overall landscape requirement of 15% and a variance from Section 94-443, B1 of the ZLDRs, to waive the 10-foot landscape buffer requirement on Division Avenue for a property located in the industrial district. The approximately 0.83 acre site is located at 75027th Street within Commission District Number One, Commissioner Kelly Shoef.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into have a presentation from the applicant.
Share my screen. Can you all see the screen?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to start off by thanking everybody, everybody for being here tonight. My name is Cameron Ennis. I'm sitting in for John Schmidt. We're here representing the applicant. So this is for Marjam Industrial Supply. We have two variance requests tonight. So I'll just run through the agenda real quick. We'll start off at the site location. We'll look at the future land use map and zoning map. We'll look at the existing site aerials and photos, and then we'll go through the two variance requests tonight, take a look at the site plan, and then also run through the variance conditions, and then we'll end off with a Q and A. So to start off, our site is here just north of 25th Street and just west of the FEC tracks in the Northwood area. The site is .83 acres. Its current future land use is industrial and its current zoning is also industrial. Here's a closer view of the site. You can see it's mostly cleared out. You can also see that railroad right-of-way just to the south, and there's also some building materials there and some storage racks currently on site. So here's a future land use map. You can see the entire area is industrial. Our site is industrial, of course, and everything surrounding it is. Same deal with zoning. Most everything surrounding it is industrial or industrial light. So just looking at some existing aerials of the site. So back in February 2016, on the left, you can see that the site was actually two sites combined and they operated as one. This was previously the Lane Hart Lumber property. They did a lot of building supply operations here in the city. Marjam came and bought the property and they continued to do building supply, warehousing, and distribution. You can see on the right, actually, in 2017, I believe, FDOT came through and did their FEC to CSX Northwood connection. And what that did is actually split the site in two and create two high-shaped parcels. The area you see in blue on the image on the right, those are the warehouses that were demolished as part of that project. And then you can also see the area highlighted in yellow. That is the railroad right-of-way that was installed. So here's some photos of the site, looking north, south, east, and west. Of particular note, you can see the storage racks on the bottom two images. These were previously permitted prior to the railroad coming in, and then once the railroad came through, they were re-permitted once again to be reinstalled and back into use. So here's our variance requests tonight. First one is to ask for reduction of the minimal, minimum landscape area by 2%. We're also, the second variance is to request a reduction of the minimum landscape buffer width by nine feet and the reduction of the required trees by nine trees along Division Avenue. And so to visualize that, here's the site plan. Please note that north is to the left on this site plan. So you can see variance one has to do with the pervious or landscape area. It's 2% short of the minimum requirement. On these sorts of sites for building supplies, it's very important to have a lot of lay-down area and a lot of maneuvering space. They're going to be, you know, creating orders and laying things down, and they really need as much space as possible to do that. Variance two, you can see there at the bottom of the plan along Division Avenue, there are existing storage racks that are legally non-conforming there that hinder the ability of the applicant to install a 10-foot wide landscape buffer. However, there is about a one-foot wide planting area there. And here's just to show you where those racks are. So they're along the entire length on Division Avenue, and they do have to be accessed. You can see there's 20-foot hiatus, just next to them, that gives forklifts plenty of space to access them. Here's some of the improvements that we're doing outside of the site. We went through several iterations of this plan to get the access right. As you can see in the two yellow brackets, we ended up doing a one-way in and one-way out. That just allows larger vehicles to be able to move throughout the site much easier and pick up their orders and leave the site in an easy manner. In blue, you can see the sidewalks that we're proposing. There's currently an unfinished sidewalk along Division Avenue. We're proposing to finish that from 25th Street to 27th Street. We're also proposing to do a five-foot sidewalk along 27th Street, which does not currently exist. And finally, an orange on Division Avenue, we're going to be building out five on-street parking spaces there. So here's a landscape plan and just another reminder of the variances we're requesting. You can see on the landscape plan where I have V2 blocked out, we're actually going to be installing hedges along that one-foot planting area, and those are going to be about 10 feet in height. And the purpose of that is to create sort of a green barrier between the public right-of-way and our site. I think it's also important to note that this site will be getting a very significant improvement of landscaping. We're proposing six additional trees over the code minimum and 338 additional shrubs above the code minimum. So now I'm just going to run through the variance conditions and how we meet them. So again, here's a reminder of our two variances. Variance one is requesting a reduction of the minimum required landscape area by 2% or about 723 square feet. And variance two is requesting a reduction of the minimum landscape buffer width along Division Avenue by nine feet and elimination of required canopy trees in that buffer. So to start off, special conditions and circumstances. As I described earlier, the railroad tracks split the site in two and created a very unusual site shape. That's not very conducive to industrial use such as this. We've also got those legally non-conforming storage racks along Division Avenue that are imperative to this site operation. There's also limited access points that we went through quite a few iterations on, and site operations, of course, require a lot of lay-down area. Circumstances don't result from actions of the applicant. Again, FDOT did the railroad, and these storage racks were permitted and re-permitted. Granting a variance will not confer any special privileges. This variance is sort of to correct the record and also to bring the site into compliance with current code requirements in terms of landscaping and otherwise. Little interpretation of the code requires applicant of rights. Landscape area, if we give up too much area, then the site does not become useful any longer. And the buffer width would eliminate those permitted storage racks along Division Avenue. The variance requested is the minimum required. We maxed out the landscape area as much as possible and tried to strategically locate where we're putting landscaping. We also have those 10-foot tall hedges along Division Avenue to help screen sight. The variance will be in harmony with intent and purpose of the code. These variances, again, are bringing this site into substantial compliance with the code comprehensive plan. The variance will not be injurious to the area involved. This area is entirely industrial in nature. It does not have a lot of landscaping. We think that this, these requests will result in a significant improvement to the area. The property cannot be put to reasonable use. The pieced-shaped site makes it very difficult for it to be used in industrial manner, and the permitted storage racks on Division Avenue are very necessary to the operation of the site. Non-conforming use of neighboring properties are not grounds for granting this variance. The justification's entirely based on current site conditions of this site. And finally, financial hardship is not the only evidence of hardship. Hardship results from railroad right-of-way creating an odd-shaped site and needing significant maneuvering and lay-down area on the site. So that's about it. We appreciate consideration of approval of these variances, and I want to thank you for your time tonight. We also have John Schmidt and Tom Randwell from Marjam here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go back to the board with any questions for the applicant. So I'll just go down, one by one, down the list. Start with Board Member Hyman. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
One clarification question, if I might, Mr. Chair. On slide number 10, could you just run your cursor along the reduction that we're talking about for the nine feet? Where that's, where that's located? Thank you. Is that that entire area in red is the nine-foot, what would be, I guess, east to west measurement?
So the measurement along Division Avenue would be from, it'd really be from bottom to top as you're looking at it here.
Right.
From the property line up would be the 10-foot or one foot, depending on how you want to look at it. So yes, this entire length here, it would normally have to be 10 feet wide, but because of those existing storage racks, we can only plant about one foot wide of space there.
And that's going to be planted as a hedge? Is that correct?
Correct. A 10-foot tall hedge along the entire line.
Material, if I might just ask, for the hedge?
I don't have it in front of me right now. I believe it may be clusia, but I don't want to say.
I thought the material said it was cocoa plum.
It could be, yes. That sounds right.
And it'll be irrigated along there?
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. We'll go to Board Member Wood. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, no questions.
Okay. Board Member Fields?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Board Member Barlow?
Can I just get a little bit, my first clarification question for the applicant was, I'm trying to understand, you are in agreement or you've had some discussion about what the city is suggesting for us to consider with the conditions, correct? The proposed hedge and?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Then on this slide, I want to understand the third bullet point about the six additional trees. Those, you are suggesting in addition to the hedge that there will be a planting of trees?
So just to clarify, those
Yeah, please.
Those six additional trees will not be planted in that buffer along Division Avenue. It's, it's just too narrow to plant any trees there. So what we did is we're planting those additional trees up in the parking area here at the north end.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, because it wasn't on this slide where you proposed the hedge. It wasn't until, I think, three slides later. I just want to make sure that if this board does decide to permit and approve the variance with or without conditions, I just want to understand what the applicant's position is. Because on this slide, you don't mention the hedges like three slides later.
Let me see if I can.
Or am I not reading it correctly?
Not sure where you're talking about, where we proposed the hedges.
I thought, can you, from slide 10, can you just go through each one? Because I thought I didn't read it until three slides later. Can you just advance through your presentation from this slide, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. There, it's right there. It's number E. So again, it wasn't, it seemed like there was a disconnect, and I wasn't sure what the applicant was proposing, if there was an agreement or alignment with what I'm possibly about to hear from the city. So you've got this six additional, when you were lining up, kind of like this is the variance that we're requesting, one and two, and you listed six trees, but then later, your client is in agreement with the proposal about the hedges in addition, correct?
Yes, I'm not sure I fully understand the question, but I, we are in agreement with the conditions proposed by staff, and the 10-foot tall hedges, I believe, was one of those conditions.
It is.
So if you wouldn't mind, just going through the question one more time?
I think you just answered, so I'll ask the question again. Is your, is the applicant in agreement with the conditions that we are anticipating the city is going to present, which is that there is a requirement to plant and maintain the 10-foot hedges?
Yes, that's correct.
Right. And my understanding is based on the PowerPoint and the slide, that's in addition to, and another location, because you're also asking for a variance by 2% of the overall landscaping, in addition to planting the six new trees.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's correct, yep.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. And then going, going to me, I think I had a similar question related to the buffer. I was looking back. It does appear that it's cocoa plum. I, I think my, that really the question was just how sustainable it was to be able to maintain a 10-foot tall cocoa plum hedge that's only, if it's only one foot in width. And that, just thinking about the proportions, that seemed awfully narrow, given, given that height. I don't know if your landscape architect is, is here, or, or if this is something you already discussed with, with city staff.
Yeah. Um, you know, I, I don't know if I have an exact answer on that. I could see if John Schmidt would have an answer. But I believe that we would be able to maintain that to the best of our ability, at least. One foot of planting area is, it should be enough to have a cocoa plum hedge there. So if there's, I could see if John's available to answer that question.
Can I chime in, Mr. Chair?
Yes, that's great.
I wasn't, I wasn't sworn in.
And hope swear you in real quickly? Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I think the problem is with the existing racks there. Anything they plant there is going to be maintained from the outside. Because remember, the racks are already there, so there's only a small area left us on their property to actually plant the hedge. So in reality, it can be planted there based on working with our landscape planner. He feels it can go there, but you're correct, it has to be maintained from the outside. So basically from the sidewalk or the city right-of-way to maintain it, because the racks are there, so evidently they can't maintain it from that side.
But I think Christopher's point, he'll clarify for himself, is maybe that's not, if we're going to put this condition on as the recommendation and agreement by the city, but in agreement by the applicant, that maybe the selection, knowing that the obligation going forward is to maintain 10 feet, is make sure that selection of what's being planted there is appropriate.
Well, and I guess Alani can do this in her presentation, but our landscape planner has reviewed it, and I believe Alani can correct me, and he's approved of the species that's going in there.
Yeah. And that, thank you very much for that clarification, because I think, you know, knowing that our professional staff, you know, from the city has reviewed that and, and, you know, they're certainly, you know, the experts as it comes to that. That struck me as just a very narrow dimension to try to maintain something that, that height. But again, I would defer to our, our professional staff. Just wanted to kind of understand that a little bit better.
It's John, it's John Schmidt, the landscape architect. If I could also add, Angela, I believe also the code does not allow us to have hedging, you know, fencing that close and that height to the right-of-way. Anything over four or six feet, I can't remember. Anything over four or six feet, I can't remember, has to be building, the primary building setback. So we're not, you know, we're not allowed to have that high stuff just for safe sightlines and visibility. And I, I understand the issue, but this is kind of what we're left with, to work with after, you know, the building permit and the area has been built.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if Mr. Schmidt has been sworn in either.
Yes, yes, I, yes, I was. I'm, I'm sorry, I meant to, I mentioned, mentioned that. I, I was sworn in.
Okay. Okay, yeah, thank you very much, Sean. With that, we'll go ahead and move to the staff presentation on this item then.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I am, my name is Elena. I'm representing planning staff in this case number 3385. Sorry, I don't want to be redundant with what the applicant has already stated. Um, I do want to show this quick site video of the subject site. This is just a video from Division showing the metal cabinets that are there in the surrounding area. You can see the, the tightness, the space that both John and Angela were speaking of in front of the cabinets on Division. And this is moving onto the southeast corner and 27th Street. And then the railroad. So I'm just going to touch base a little bit on the background. The applicant did do a great job of discussing that. The recent purchase of a portion of the existing site by FDOT resulted in the pie-shaped lot that we are talking about today. A great portion of the surrounding lots are zoned industrial and have industrial uses by nature. The owner did submit a development action, development application to the planning division with intentions of redeveloping the affected area with a 6,650 square foot warehouse building and constructing a 2,100 square foot storage shed and two connects boxes for storage. You saw this before, the applicant showed the site plan with the proposed buildings and structures on the lot. These are the variances that the applicant is asking for. A variance to waive the 10-foot buffer on Division as well as a variance to waive the overall landscape requirement of 15%. So the variance, they would be asking us for the 2%. As stated before, the, the regular shape of the lot make it challenging for truck maneuvering and storage, which is the primary use of the site. So that coupled with the landscaping function simultaneously is a challenge. As stated before, there are illegal non-conforming metal storage racks that are already there on Division, which makes the 10-foot buffer unattainable. The applicant did discuss the things that were being done to mitigate not meeting the landscape requirements. One being the 10-foot landscape buffer on 27th Street and along a small portion of the property line on Division Avenue. We talked about the 10-foot hedges that would be replacing where the 10-foot buffer would be required. They are also providing landscaping at the eastern corner adjacent to the proposed parking spaces in efforts to alleviate the lack of landscaping on the site overall. Staff has determined that these waivers will not cause detrimental harm to the health, safety, or welfare of the subject property or surrounding properties. Based on all the considerations given in these variance requests complying with the required standards in Section 9438D6, staff recommends approval with conditions. Such conditions would be the proposed hedge along Division Avenue planted where possible in between the existing metal shelving and the adjacent right-of-way must be in place and maintained at a height of 10 feet at all times. Also, applicant shall, shall maintain the existing six-foot chain link fence that surrounds the property and treat it with an opaque material that will serve as screening for outdoor storage at all times as required in Section 94315B of the zoning win development regulations. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I'll first go to Board Member Wood to see if you have any questions for staff.
Uh, no, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Board Member Fields?
No questions here.
Okay. Board Member Barlow?
Nope, staff did a great job and no questions. Thank you.
Okay. Board Member Hyman?
Sir, one, one question. On this issue of the metal shelving, which, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but look, appear to be the typical lumberyard storage racks that would be used for, not palletized, but, but building materials that would be able to be stacked outside. What's the intended use, proposed use of those storage racks that, that we're looking at? And wondering why they might not be just removed if not necessary and provide an opportunity for the landscape barrier to be put into place, at least better than just the one foot?
Is that a question for staff or the applicant?
It's a question during the staff presentation. Whoever can answer it, you know, please feel free to.
The applicant has to answer that, yes.
Okay. So those racks are, are used for storing building material inventory. They're already permitted. They've actually been re-permitted after the railroad came through. So they store building materials, which is the entire use of the site. It's to store and distribute building materials. So if they're removed and replaced with landscaping, that entire length essentially becomes useless. There's not enough space there to maneuver forklifts and trucks and what have you to be able to access those racks.
So, so to answer you, to, the answer to my question is that, that the racks as they exist are going to be reused for a similar purpose that they were provided for initially, even though we've got new buildings. But you're saying the use of the site is basically the same as it was with Lane Hart and Potter there?
That's correct. And, and it has been currently, it's currently being used and never stopped being used. So it's, it's been used for that purpose throughout.
Okay. So, because I didn't see anything in the racks when you did the, the presentation. I may have missed them along the way, but that's, that's fine. Thank you for that answer.
Thank you, Board Member Hyman. Any other questions? Then I'll, just moving to me. I think I, I, you know, related questions to the one that Board Member Hyman asked, which is, I mean, we saw from the video and the photographs, you know, the presence of those racks. So the racks are proposed, just to confirm, the racks are proposed to remain in the location where they are today? Is that correct? They're not being moved?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So today, they are also just basically one foot off of the property line and the same, the same separation that is being formally sought as the waiver here, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So the waiver is no different from what the, the current condition is that, that exists on the site?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any other questions regarding, regarding the application. So at this point, we'll move to public comment. So I'll ask Mr. Roach, are there members of the public that are either present in person or online to comment on this application item?
Mr. Chair, we do have one person here in the Flagler Gallery, but I also do have one person online first. So let me do the online just one second.
While Mr. Roach is doing that, Mr. Chair, I do have a letter of support.
Okay. Yeah, if you, if you'd like, I'll have you go ahead and read that into the record. Madam Secretary, please.
Okay. This letter comes from the Toy Store Association Incorporated. Dear Board Members, we are in receipt of a variance request notice number 3385. A hearing on this property is scheduled for Thursday, April 1st. This letter is to express concern in regards to this request. We have been good neighbors with the Par Jam and have not complained about their consent loading and unloading of trucks on the public roadways. We think the site landscape screening should be significant and sufficient to match the appearance West Palm Beach wants to project. During the last few years, we have worked with the city of West Palm Beach and code enforcement for landscaping corrections and developing more attractive street presence for our property. We are regularly trimming, replacing trees and shrubs on our bordering hedge and fence line. The open lot that has requested the variances are outly shaped and a result of the rail revisions and land taking. We are requesting documents for further review, but understand the hardship that was created. This lot has been a barren, dusty storage area that has been detrimental to the whole neighborhood and neighborhood values. This industrial zone is an old established zone with only few vacant lots. The only landscaping found throughout the zone is with the newer product built over the last 15 years. We, as a board members, are glad to see the city has become involved with enforcement of landscape codes. Any landscaping will help improve the entire area. If Marjam has a unity of title on this parcel, then a variance will be understandable on its common southern boundary of the lot. There are no trees or greenery on any of their properties. And again, we think the site landscape screening should be significant and sufficient to match the appearance West Palm Beach wants to project. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to the decision of this board going forward. The Board of Directors, Toy Store Association Incorporated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
So, Mr. Chair, Stephen has joined us virtually for, to offer some public comment. He will need to be sworn in before speaking.
Would you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about the gift will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. I would like to oppose this, this variance for two reasons. Number one, there's not a lot of shrubs and greenery in the area, and it's close to Northwood. And, and by the way, I'm an owner in the, at 2727 Rosemary. There's a community of garages there where I happen to own a unit. And, and, and as a result of all the, the work that has been done around the area, a lot of trees have disappeared and.
Bullwine.
And, yeah. And in today's environment, I don't think we should support any removing of greenery or shrubs or anything. I think Marjam, if when they bought the land, knew there was some requirements around 15%. And, you know, there's no reason to, to grant it. Number two, in the case of Marjam, they treat this entire area around Rosemary, Division Avenue and 2727, 27th Street as their own. They constantly have trucks blocking the traffic. They constantly unload materials on the street in the middle of the day and park their trucks in the middle of the night on the street, making access to my property at 2727 Rosemary very difficult and wasting time for everybody. Marjam has not been respectful of the people that own property in the area and as a result should comply with the, the requirements for shrubbery and greenery on the piece of property they have.
Okay. Thank you very much for your, your comment. Okay, John, you said it, it looks like we have another person?
Yes, we have Fred here in the Flagler Gallery who would also like to offer public comment.
Do you raise your right hand to be sworn in? Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about the gift will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Please start off with your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Board Members. My name is Fred Bullwine. I am a property owner of 2727 North Rosemary Avenue. I've been owner of this property for over 15 years. During this time, I have watched Marjam grow. This growth is laudable. I commend them for their expansions. There are consequences on this growth to our streets, to our neighborhoods, to safety, and to the environment. Our project at 2727 North Rosemary was required to keep a landscape buffer. While 15% reduction allowed by the variance appears to be small, it will have a huge impact. Let's look at some of the possible impacts granting this variance. As Marjam concentrates its inventory, more congestion is likely to occur on North Rosemary and 27th Street. That is more forklifts using public streets carrying large loads which obstruct their visions over 10-foot wide. Presently, Marjam uses North Rosemary as a loading and unloading zone for this inventory. Consequently, pedestrians, working persons visiting Evergreen Cemetery, customers and owners conducting business on 27th Avenue, and property owners at 2727 North Rosemary who drive trucks to their units have to traverse this maze of trucks, forklifts, workers. As a result, concentrating their business location will result in allowing larger work area as a result of the variance. Let me direct your attention to several emails that I've sent to several of the commissioners. Hopefully, they will have time to review them and pass them on to you. The congestion and infringement on the right-of-way and driverless vehicles are parked in the middle of the road. The landscape is important to the environment. Has this panel considered the impact on the local environment? Remember, every little bit counts. The increased dust caused by unsurfaced storage areas, dust blowing into the Northwood residential areas and the strategic business areas of dining and outside displays that are in the unique block, six-block area of the commercial area. Remember that the hurricane does blow strong winds. And will the storage of the racks of lumber be secured during these conditions? The impact on the roads, this is really critical. Please note, most of the licensed plates are from New Jersey. Marjam trucks use our roads, but don't contribute to the local upkeep. Marjam has a large section of vacant property across the street that could be used for a, their needed business. And that will be a precedent for allowing this variance and other developments in the area. So in closing, I would encourage the Board of Appeals to deny the variance request as it stands and encourage Marjam and Mark Buller, who reexamine and address the issues. and encourage Mar Jam and Mark Buller, who reexamine and address the issues of the impact to the area.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Roach, any other public comment, either in person or video or written correspondence?
Mr. Chair, I have not seen any other interest in public comment, no.
Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing and move into board discussion. So I'll, I can either, like what we've done in some of these other virtual meetings has gone down the list. So make sure everybody
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Chair, if you wouldn't mind responding to some of the public comment.
That's, yes, that's fine. I'll allow the applicant to address a couple of the issues that were raised during public comment to clarify for our understanding.
Sure, so to to start off with the public comment, I'd like to point out that currently, this application is requesting to add a warehouse and storage area onto the site. And what that will do is actually help to move some of that activity that may be occurring on the streets and on some of their other properties and move that activity onto this site. This site currently just has the storage racks on it, but they need a structure and and some of that maneuvering area to be able to do some of those loading activities on this site. So getting this approval will help relieve some of those issues. And also, I'd like to point out that we are providing a significant upgrade to the landscaping on the site. So if this is not approved, the current site condition will continue. And as they pointed out correctly, there's not a lot of landscaping existing. So with the approval of this variance, this will result in a significant upgrade of the landscaping of the area and really help with the screening that you heard with the toy store comment as well. I'd also like to address the conditions, the first condition in particular. After further review with our team, it's not going to be possible to install and maintain a shrub of ten feet of height along Division Avenue with that width. In fact, the code actually requires shrubs to be four feet in height when they're installed and up to eight feet maintained. So the condition actually goes against the code and is not possible for us to meet. So we'd like to amend the condition to the code requirement if possible.
Is that the extent of your response to the issues that were raised?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay.
Chair?
Yes.
Given that the applicant has came back with further comments, I have a question, if I may?
Yes.
Based on the request that you're making to the changes of staff, it, what it, is there any way that the racks can be moved in a couple feet more than where they are to at least three feet for the maintenance of that hedge? You're saying it it goes against code where to go over the eight feet, the ten feet? Can we move the racks at least two feet further inward to give additional space for maintenance of the hedge?
In response to that, I'd like to remind everybody that the racks are currently permitted, and they have concrete footings that are currently in place. They're installed where they were permitted historically. But I'd I'd like to defer to Tom Ramble, our client, see if he has a response to that.
I think if you have to move those racks, it will be a very costly and disruptive for the for the for the maneuvering of the equipment. So moving them may may be more detrimental to this project than we see possible. And I guess John Schmidt can confirm that.
Is John weighing in on that?
Again, these these racks are currently permitted. They've been permitted here historically, and the reason why they're they're in this location and we're trying to keep them there, they, Mar Jam needs the maneuvering area behind them to be able to move around these materials within the site in a safe manner. So if it was easy as moving them a couple feet, we certainly would have done that. We wouldn't be here before you. But again, it's it's, they've been permitted, they've been repermitted, they've been installed, removed, and then reinstalled where they are currently. So we'd like to keep them in place.
Okay. Want to turn it over to staff in just a second, but I did, just to clarify also, something, a statement that was made during public comment, there was some comment made about dust. It sounded like arising from the site, and from the photographs presented by staff, it looked like there are some unpaved areas on site following development of the site plan. Can you clarify, will there still be unpaved? I mean, obviously, there will be landscape areas on site, and then and there will be, you know, some pavement. But will, what will be the condition of of the site after afterwards? Will there still be areas where vehicles will be maneuvering that are that will be unpaved that might still be a source of dust?
So I will say, at the very least, the parking area that you see at the very top of the plan, that entire area will be paved. But I'd I'd like to again defer to Tom about the rest of the site and whether that will remain shell rock or what have you for the maneuvering area.
Mr. Chair, I can, I don't know if Tom want to answer that question, but let staff, I just talked to the landscape planner. So unfortunately, out in the field right now. But he said that in discussions with the applicant, going back and forth, that's how we reached that agreement that and the hedge can't go up to ten feet in height. But I'm quite sure where the applicant is getting that from. And he's assured me that it can grow within that foot and that the cocoa plum can be trimmed and maintained and required to grow up to that height. So that's what Reeve said, that that's what he worked out with the applicant before we actually came and brought this case to the ZVA as a term not requiring them to do the ten-foot buffer and not putting in the trees in there. So that was kind of our compromise with that. So it can be maintained, cocoa plum can work in that, and the height at ten feet, Reeve said, it can be trimmed and to maintain and to go up to that height. Of course, it's not planted at ten feet. I mean, it's not going to be planted at ten feet, but a certain time has to grow up to ten feet.
No, in your, excuse me, but in what the staff's report says, it actually says planted. So I was expecting, if you can clarify that, that it is going to be planted at ten feet, because that will help with some of this dust, too, because it's going to be a screening on that southern.
And that may be a typo, what Mballo is, I mean, I don't think, and I just hung the phone, I can ask him. I don't think they're going to find a cocoa plum at ten feet now.
With all the nurseries we have in South Florida, they
Usually, they don't grow that high. Usually, they don't grow up that high when they cultivate them.
So, yeah, I, yeah, a couple of comments on this. One is that, yeah, I thought when we went through the presentation that the question was posed to the applicant, that they were in agreement with the conditions. And I thought the answer at the time was yes. The condition does read must be in place and maintained at a height of ten feet at all times, which implies, you know, that it, that at a time of placement, and I, which I think is unrealistic. I know cocoa plum grows fairly quickly, so I I don't know if, and maybe staff can weigh in on if there's often a condition where it, because I know that similar conditions get placed on trees where they have to be a certain caliber width. But if you can say, okay, yeah, they must achieve a caliber width or a height of X within six months of planting or within a certain timeframe, that seems a little bit more realistic. I don't know if that's something we've done before in the past.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, for the record, John Roach, Principal Planner, we have done that in in the past before. And, you know, there may be a little gray area with regards to the wording of the condition. You know, obviously, we would prefer that it be installed at the highest that they can obtain at the time of installation. But I I think the end goal was that it needs to be maintained at a level of ten feet once it's reached that maturity. We have in the past, in conditions, put a time limitation that, you know, that maturity has to be reached within six months, a year, two years, or what have you. So, you know, I think there's opportunity to to include that in there.
Okay, yeah, I think that may be more appropriate. I don't, it may be difficult to install cocoa plum that is already or, you know, either obtained or installed cocoa plum that's already ten feet. But I mean, certainly, if this were pursued, want to see it installed at a, or to reach that within a fairly short amount of time. Let me go back to Board Member Fields. Do you have any other, any discussion?
No, that was it. Thank you.
For the board, okay. Let me go back then or over to Board Member Barlow for a discussion.
No, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that if we're evaluating, at least from my position, kind of what these conditions are. In order to get the variant, what is the priority of awarding it? And maybe that isn't the appropriate selection. I mean, you can clearly do ten-foot planted hedges, I've seen it in my neighborhood. And maybe if the cocoa plum is not the appropriate one, then maybe that needs to be reevaluated by applicant and city as we, as members, are going to decide whether or not to grant this variance. So I would just ask my colleagues to please consider that, too.
Okay, yeah, when it comes time to make the motion, we could look at the wording of of that condition if a motion, in fact, is made for approval or not. Okay, any other comments, Board Member Barlow?
Oh, no, no. Except I don't know if anyone's going to put on the record that, I mean, as members, you know, we don't, you know, we're not opining on, you know, whether or not they're good neighbors and traffic on public roads or anything like that, so.
Yes, yeah, thank you. We'll go to Board Member Hyman, please.
You. With with all the presentation and and the, some of the issues that have been raised, I I have concern about not the vehicles on the roads, but certainly the vehicles around this property. And it seems like there's, we we don't have a full understanding of of what the what the landscape products are going to be and how all that's going to to come together. We can tell the cocoa plum that we only want it to grow on one side, but it's not going to listen, okay? It's going to the inside. It just won't be able to be maintained because of the, if it's up against the the racks, and the racks are full, obviously. I think that the the cocoa plum or or the calusia, as it's sometimes called, you know, is a fast-growing plant, but it doesn't grow. I've never seen it grow in a, you know, in a one-foot tightness. We've used protocarpus, that that seems to be a tighter plant, slower growing, and can be maintained at a one or one and a half foot width. But I think my my basic issue is that there are some problems that may need to be worked out, that we shouldn't rush to judgment on this. And perhaps my fellow members might want to consider a thirty-day postponement so that all of these issues can get worked out, and everybody's got a better feeling for this going forward.
Can I say one last thing, Mr. Hyman and the board? And Chair, you're more than welcome to do that. And again, my landscape planner, unfortunately, I do apologize, he's on his way back in, but may not make it in by the time this this is over with. But my problem is, we've been down this road, Mr. Hyman. I respect your opinion in terms of Reeve's work with them. We've been at this for almost six months. It's just not come up. This case has been going between the applicant and the staff about six or seven months. And that's something that my planner, who's a landscape planner, is saying that it can work and fit. But, you know, I do respect to you guys, we still, I mean, that's your opinion. If you want to recommend continues, we'll go back and have another conversation. But we spent about six, seven months going back and forth with the applicant with different variations, going back and forth and coming up with a solution we thought was the best for the site as far as the operation of the trucks in the street and all. The applicant understands that some of this will help them get it off the street, the functionality of it, and I understand the issues with that. So from that standpoint, I mean, the board can make a motion and do what they want to staff with about that. But just want to let you know, we spent six or seven months working with this applicant to try to come up with the solution that we have and the conditions that we have.
Have the have the members, excuse me, if I might, Mr. Chairman? Angela, have have the neighbors had their input prior to this meeting into this whole conversation?
Uh, no, basically, the neighbors, there was two issues. And I don't want to go back way back on the history of this case, but the the lot that they talk about that's on the on the, I guess that's on Twenty-Fifth Street, that was the issue that started. They were doing a lot of this stuff on that property, which is basically on the south side of Twenty-Fifth Street that they own. And they got cited, and this has been a chronic nuisance. So staff have been trying to work with them to get that lot cleaned up. And eventually, they will come back and develop the whole area with the with the master plan, per se. But the main thing they had to do was get operations off of their lot right now at this time. So that's what happened over time. So the applicants, the property owners, they got to notice this. I don't know if Lanny can say whether they had any comments prior to the meeting. I don't know if she had any communication with them prior to the meeting, but no, we have not.
So so the they that you're referring to are the, is the applicant and his people, and the the comments that were that were proffered today by the neighbors have not come into your consideration as far as the effect that these variances may have on the surrounding neighborhood, which is typically one of the things we consider in our deliberations?
Well, I mean, again, looking back, and I think the main issue, the variance is the difference. What the, I heard from the applicants or the surrounding properties was the operation of the operation on Rosemary, the trucks, the cars. The variance is dealing with the landscaping and landscape script, which is actually increasing the landscaping. Twenty-seventh Street, the toy store actually have a landscape buffer now that they did not have. So it's a difference between what the app, what the neighbors are saying really is not contradiction to what the variance is for. It's two different things.
Okay, I I understand. Thank you.
Well, Angela, can you clarify, are you saying that the landscaping is additional? Or are you clarifying that that might be compliance? Because the requirement's always been there, whether or not they've complied and we've enforced it as city, you know, residents.
He asked me about the variance and what the community is talking about. And what I'm saying is, the variance that's before you today is twofold, the landscape buffer waiver.
It requires, it requires fifteen and and which maybe the, again, they haven't complied with that, but we're considering it, bringing it down to twelve percent.
But the, what I've heard from the neighbors is traffic, trucks, et cetera. And what I was telling Mr. Hyman is, that's not what the variance is for. The variance is for dealing with the waiver for the buffer, waiver for landscaping. That was my whole thing. So that was, I was saying, the difference between what they were saying and actually what the variance is for them today.
I agree. That's why I I had gone on record, you know, saying that we're not opining on if they're good neighbors or the traffic or that. We're focused on what the, you know, requirements are for the city and whether or not we're going to allow this waiver and variance.
And I appreciate what you said, Angela. I I do. I am concerned also, though, about what the the applicants, what what John's gentleman who was presenting indicated about their their conflict with the landscape material that they're talking about. If that's relevant, I'd like to, I'd like to focus on that for a minute. That's, I I've forgotten the gentleman's name who presented.
Cameron.
Thank you, Cameron.
Yeah, so if if we're able to install the hedging at four feet and then later maintain it at ten as it grows, we're okay with that. That can work, but we we just cannot install at ten feet. we, we just cannot install at 10 feet. I think as everybody uh, has recognized, that's just not something that's possible. Uh, but we can install at four and then later maintain at 10 as it grows.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you for that clarification because my understanding from the prior comment was that there is an objection to the 10 foot as well. So the, the, the comment is just regarding the install height, which um, seems like that might be a li- a little difficult to achieve, you know, at, right at day one. Okay. Um, yes.
If, if I may ask of uh, Ms. Jones, man, uh, do, uh, can we have the staff uh, put a time period on this? And what would be the recommendation of time period to go it to that height? Uh, as uh, staff may have a better feel for that. So we can at least address a, a time period of getting to the height of 10 feet and that the uh, applicant can be agreeable to. So we can possibly do this for it.
We can, but again, that will be something I will need the, my landscape planner, who's on his way back in. We can put a, you guys can put a condition in there that we can work toward that, but I will need him as an expert to tell me six months, seven months. So that's something that staff can't tell you right now because that's not our area expertise. So I mean, if you want to put a condi- uh, general condition in there, we'll make sure that it grows to a certain timeframe. But I have to ask him that question. He's not here.
Mr. Field.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Yeah. First, well, yeah, let me just, and we haven't gotten to uh, Mr. Wood yet. He's been very patient. Um, was the applicant responding to that first?
I was actually going to respond to something you said, um, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I'd like to put in the record that that the previous objection about the 10 feet that I had mentioned, uh, it was just to put into the record that section 94 dash 302 dot C of the code, um, it's restricts the height of hedging uh, to eight feet. Um, so that, that's just something I wanted to bring up. But again, if the board wishes for us to maintain a 10 and that's something that they're going to allow to do, even though it's not in compliance with the code, we're okay with that. Um, again, like I said before.
What was that section again, Cameron? What was the section again?
94 dash 302 C.
302 C?
Okay.
And I think for compatibility reasons, there are uh, instances in which um, you know, this board grants waivers and variances. Um, and, and a lot of times it's, it's due to compatibility or to mitigate, uh, you know, for, for example, in this instance, not meeting a buffer width. Um, and so we might um, then compensate for that by going to a, a different height. And so, uh, you know, I think again, we, our professional landscaping staff at the city, you know, deemed this appropriate. And I think, you know, they had justification for doing so. So it makes sense. Um, I'd like to go to uh, Board Member Wood, uh, who's not had a chance to comment first, and then uh, if there may be other board comment, we'll, we'll get back to that. But Board Member Wood?
Uh, well, most of my questions have already been answered through this dialogue. However, um, I still have concerns over the buffer and the height of it, more to the maintaining of it than I do the installation of it. Because maintaining a 10 foot hedge in a one foot area is going to be difficult. We see it all over the city now where they plant them and then a year later, there are big holes and gaps and so forth, and it doesn't serve the purpose. There's nobody really to go back and enforce that. That condition. So I'm concerned about that condition is, uh, is all I'm saying.
Great. Okay. Um, I'll just briefly add comment that, uh, you know, I think echoing what Board Member Barlow said that uh, you know, I know we heard objections regarding loading and unloading in the street and other types of activity. That's outside the purview of the two variances that were, that we're considering. Although it has also been stated and appears to be evident from the application that uh, approving this application would move a lot of that activity onto the site. So it would, would theoretically um, help mitigate that. And I think, you know, the, the change, the reduction in the overall uh, landscaping uh, provided on site from 15% to 13%. The fact that, you know, this, that, that the site gave up right of way for the railroad to come through and then also ended up with a very oddly shaped um, site. This was all cited in the uh, justification for their request. And often those types of conditions make it difficult to meet, you know, meet a, a uh, a, a code requirement like this. And two, you know, the difference, if, if they were looking for five, you know, going down to 5% or 6% or something like that, I think, you know, that, that would seem um, like that they're not making the best effort. But you know, a difference between 13 and 15%, you know, if you had a rectangular parcel, it's probably a lot easier to, to meet that. So I think that's, that's understandable. I'd like to just turn it back to the, the board if there was any final discussion and then uh, we can, can hear a motion on, on this item, whether it's to approve, deny or, or defer. So any other discussion from any other board members? If so, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the zoning board of appeals grant DDA case number 3385, a request by John Smith on behalf of Mark Buller for a variance from section 94174B6 of the City Zoning and Land Development Regulations to reduce the overall landscape requirements of 15% and a variance from section 94443B1 of the VLDR to waive the 10 foot landscape buffer requirement on Division Avenue for a property located in the industrial district. The motion is based upon the testimony presented along with the applica- along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings in fact that each, the criteria in article two, section 9438D6 of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of this variance is made conditional upon the restrictions stipulated and or safeguards listed in the staff report dated April 1, 2021, which I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the proposed and intent of the zoning and land development regulation and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
Mr. Chair, I would like to second the motion with the addition to add to the staff recommendation, one year be placed in that uh, to reach the height of 10 feet.
Okay. The motion was made by Board Member Wood, seconded by uh, Board Member Fields with a uh, a stipulation on uh, the condition. Does the maker of the motion accept the um, the modification to that condition?
Yes.
Could I add a condition to you, please?
Yes.
That they're planted at four feet if that's what was represented today?
Accept.
Yes.
Yes, accepted. Okay. Um, so just to clarify, uh, we're going back to the uh, staff conditions of approval that uh, condition number one, um, which previously said the proposed hedge on, along Division Avenue planted where, where possible in between the existing metal shelving and the adjacent right of way. Uh, instead of must be in place, I think we'd say must be installed at a minimum height of four feet. And uh, achieve and be maintained at a height of 10 feet within one year of planting. Does that sound correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay. Then it has been moved and seconded. Uh, so I'll ask the board secretary to uh, please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan?
Uh, yes.
Malika Barlow?
To approve, yes.
Michael Heinem?
Yes.
Michael Wood?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Okay. The motion passes five to zero. Uh, we'll move on to the uh, next item on the agenda. I know the moderator will need a minute to get the correct people in the room. So we'll just pause for a second to uh, allow that to happen.
Yeah, just give me one second.
Okay, Mr. Chair, that should be everybody. Everyone will just need to turn on their cameras and unmute.
Okay. We'll have the board secretary please swear in the witnesses and speakers on this item.
Okay. Is Mr. Paul Dos giving testimony today?
Oh, you'll need to unmute.
And Richard Bartlett, are you giving testimony today? Okay. Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we'll have the board secretary please read this item into the record.
A request of request by Ellie Zacharitis of Dunay, Miskell and Bachman LLP on behalf of Selfish Real Estate LLC for a Class B special use permit to allow a convenience store with a fast food component and accessory automotive fuel sales in the neighborhood commercial zoning district as prescribed by section 94 dash 273D12 of the Zoning and Land Development Regulations. Waivers from the additional standards are being requested. The approximately 1.2 acre site is located at 2624 North Australian Avenue within Commission District Number One, Commissioner Kelly Schoff.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll uh, now turn it over to the applicant for a brief presentation.
Hi, good afternoon. Ellie Zacharitis, Dunay Miskell Bachman. On behalf of the applicant, uh, I'm going to share my screen. Can you all see that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect. I will try to be brief. I know your last item was quite long. Okay. So as noted, this is, I'm here on behalf of Sailfish Real Estate. Um, and the property is 2624 North Australian. It's actually on the corner of Australian Avenue and 25th Street, and this is the project location. So currently parcel one, which is approximately 0.56 acres is currently utilized as a convenience store. It was previously approved as a gas station with convenience store and was running as such for many years. Um, since then, the gas portion is no longer in use and it is solely a convenience store. Uh, but historically, this is what it has been used for, which is the use that's before you today. Uh, we are also, we have also purchased parcel two, which is approximately 0.5 acres. Uh, together that makes approximately 1.2 and we're looking to ultimately have the same use, but on approximately double the land. Um, as noted, the property is considered neighborhood commercial, which is also the, the zoning to the north and the south. Uh, the zoning to the east is industrial and the zoning to the west is office commercial. Uh, we are not looking to change the zoning or the future land use. Just want to make a note of that. Uh, the future land use is commercial, as is the north, south and west of us, and again, industrial to our east. So we've been working closely with staff. Uh, thank you staff for all your help on this. We have secured site plan review, but we do have this Class B special use permit to allow the convenience store with automotive fuel sales. Uh, in addition to the Class B use, we are asking for two waivers. Uh, one for the convenience store to be located within a thousand uh, feet of an existing place of worship. Um, and the second waiver is to allow more than two pump islands with three, um, group pump islands, uh, with three pumps per island. Uh, before I get into too much detail, with regard to waiver one for the thousand square feet of an existing place of worship, again, I just want to note that the convenience stores, convenience store is currently there and has been there for many, many, many years. Um, so it's not like we're changing the use, but nonetheless, since we're going to tear down and rebuild, we have to come before you all and get that waiver. With regard to the second waiver, I just want to note that we are still asking for six ultimate pump islands. Uh, the difference here is instead of having two pump islands with three pumps per island, we are doing two islands, uh, two pumps on three stations. So you're still ultimately, the result is six. So here is the proposed site plan. Uh, the convenience store is just shy of 5,000 square feet. It will also have a um, drive-through component as well. I don't know if you can see my cursor or not. Uh, but the drive-through will be on the north side. You see the two lanes. Um, again, we have these, these six uh, stations, two, two and two for, for the gas. Um, in discussions with the city, they really wanted to have a shared bike path to the east of our property along the pond, which we thought would be a great incentive to get people out and around that pond as well. And hopefully additional development when it occurs will do the same. So we're, we're proposing 10 foot wide paved bike path on that east, that east side. And on our south, we're also doing a 10 foot wide shared um, bike and walker path as well. We have been working with the county um, throughout this entire process. And the county does have in their, their long range thoroughfare map, they do have plans to widen Australian Avenue. So with that, we have dedicated 14 feet of right of way on our west property line. Um, and that's kind of denoted, you'll see, again, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but it's denoted, oops, sorry. It's denoted by this black line. So there's a clip here that we're dedicating as well as this 14 feet along the west property line. Additionally, the county really wanted to extend the southbound left turn lane on Australian Avenue. Um, in order to do that, which we're paying for, of course, uh, but in order to do that, to make a U-turn really feasible, we really were required to shift our entire site further to the west, to the east, excuse me. So not only are we giving them the 14 foot right of way dedication and the turn lane, but we are also shifting our site. So we were somewhat condensed with what we can do between the dedication, shifting the site, um, the, the, the 10 foot path on the east and the 10 foot path on the, the south. I think we did the best we could with the, what we had left of the property. And this gives you a little idea. I think it's in your packet of the left turn lane, how it's being extended along Australian and that turning radius that would be needed, which is why we, you know, we shifted the property as well. Uh, this is just an elevation, really a, um, a simple elevation of the property for the Kangaroo Convenience Store. Um, also, we had two community meetings. Uh, we were lucky enough to get a meeting in February of 2020 before COVID hit us all. Uh, that meeting was in person. On December 16th, we had a second meeting. Unfortunately, we couldn't have that in person, but we did do a virtual meeting. Um, the, I think the gist of that meeting, while of course we will never satisfy everybody. Um, but I do think the gist of that meeting was they really wanted, the neighbors really wanted this area cleaned up. Um, but they also wanted to make sure it was going to be safe. So we have been working, we sent multiple emails back and forth with your police chief, um, working on how to make sure we can keep this area safe when we do redevelop. Um, he provided us a lot of SEPTED principles that he asked us to implement, which we did, increased lighting, surveillance cameras and the like. Um, and that was, I, I, I believe he is, he was satisfied because staff recommended approval. And that's it for my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Zacharitis. Um, we'll move to um, uh, members of the board for any questions for the applicants. I'll start off with Board Member Barlow.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Board Member Heinem?
Thank you. Um, you mentioned in your presentation, uh, a thousand foot uh, uh, waiver or a thousand foot dimension. Um, and our waiver indicates in the, in what we've been provided, 100 foot. Was there a typo or am I, am I missing something there?
I think maybe a typo, maybe Alana can confirm, but I believe your code requires a thousand, a thousand. distance between a place of worship, and we do not meet that 1,000 distance requirement.
Hi, it's Elena. It's actually 100 for a pre-existing place of worship and 1,000 for another convenience store. So for this particular subject, it would be 100, which they don't meet because it's adjacent to the site.
Okay, so, all right. And the only other question I had was, did you get any feedback from the, from the church during your process of your neighborhood meetings?
We did not. In fact, I, I reached out to the church on multiple occasions and never heard back. So I do not have any positive or negative feedback from the church.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Wood?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, Board Member Fields?
No, I didn't have a question. Thank you.
Okay, and I do not have any questions for the applicant. So we'll move to the staff presentation on this item.
Hi, okay, I'm gonna attempt to share my screen. You see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So in the absence of time, I'm going to try not to be redundant. The applicant did a great job of expressing what the situation is. As you saw, this is the site, the 2624 North Australian Avenue. I'm gonna show a short video of the site here. This is from Australian. You can see the existing entrance and the condition of the property today. And then this is from 25th Street. An elevation. And showing the vacant lot to the east. And the surrounding area. Okay. All right. This is an additional photo of the site in its entirety with the vacant lot to the east. Just a little background on this site. The area recently went through a city-initiated rezoning of 10 lots from office commercial to neighborhood commercial. This was done in an effort to revitalize the economic development in this corridor. This zoning change was done through ordinance number 491120. As the applicant stated, currently there is an existing convenience store in the lot. The applicant submitted plans to demolish the existing structure and site and to combine it with the vacant lot to the east and construct on the new convenience store, just under 5,000 square feet with the fast food component and the accessory motor vehicle sales on the site. Pursuant to Section 94-273 of the City of West Palm Beach's Zoning and Land Development Regulations, convenience stores with accessory motor vehicle sales are permitted within the neighborhood commercial zoning district within approval of a Class B special use permit by the ZBA. In addition to the Class B special use, the applicant is also asking for waivers. This is a survey of the property as it stands today. And this is the site plan, which the applicant did share as well. The first waiver that the applicant is asking for is the distance from the pre-existent, pre-existing place of worship. They are asking for 100 feet because this pre-existing place of worship is adjacent, the property adjacent to the north of the subject property. As stated before, the existing convenience store has been there for a while and does have an active alcohol license. So staff does not object to this waiver request as the site is currently occupied by a convenience store that has an alcohol license. So there would be no new use coming into this location. The second waiver that the applicant is asking for is the orientation of pumps. As they explained, it's just the orientation and the number of pumps, but the total number of pumps would still be six. So they would not exceed the maximum number that is allowed. Staff has determined that the Class B special use permit and requested waivers meet the applicable standards in the general special use, specific use, additional and waiver standards set forth in the city's zoning land use and development regulations. Therefore, staff is recommending approval, subject to the condition that all of the conditions of approval for the informal site plan review case number 2104 be must be satisfied. This concludes staff's presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to the board for questions of staff. We'll start off with Board Member Hyman.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Board Member Wood?
No questions.
Board Member Fields?
A question in reference to the traffic flow in and out of these sites. I noticed that, that there's a turn lane that's being added to, to help with the traffic flow, and I know the rush hour, the traffic can be a little hectic in that intersection, especially coming and the left turn lane heading south on Australian. There's only two entrances into the existing, well, the proposed plan, and that's traveling north and traveling from west. So the southbound traffic would have to make a U-turn in order to get into the site. And my question is, is, is that extension to the turn lane, and I think it only stacks, stacks three cars right now. And I think there will, this, it's a beautiful design and beautiful the plan, but is that concerning the additional traffic that will be trying to get into a convenience store, fast food restaurant, and now back in these gas station? And how would that affect that, that traffic, that increase from the turn lane to make that U-turn, which is going to be major, especially during a morning and evening rush, rush hour times?
So I, I don't know if staff, if they have the city's traffic engineer here. I, I know that the applicant's traffic consultant is on the line. So staff, if, if you want to either answer that or defer to the applicant's traffic consultant, that you can probably do either one.
We'll defer to the applicant's traffic expert.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record. We can't hear you, John.
While he's, this is Ellie again, while he's getting his mic situated. So to answer your question, Mr. Fields, there's going to be additional traffic on that southbound left turn or U-turn lane, absolutely with that extension. Ideally, what we would have loved was if you were heading east on 25th Street, that you'd be able to make a left-hand turn into our site. I'd like to remind the board that, and I didn't note this on my, in my presentation, but there are currently two ingress egress points on 25th, as well as two ingress egress points on Australian. We are going down to two, one on 25th and one on Australian. Ideally, we would have loved to, since we now added additional land, that whole vacant parcel, while we were heading east on 25th, we could have an, an ingress, a left turn onto, on from 25th into our site. Again, we would have loved that. We thought it made sense. It was so much further away from Australian. But staff did not want us making that eastbound left turn lane onto the site. Again, we would love it, but that's not what staff wanted.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, a, as far as the turn lane, county asked us to pay for extending that turn lane beyond the, the county's minimum requirement. So as you said, you said that right now, we can stack about three cars. When they're done, it will be able to stack about 10 vehicles. So there's a significant improvement in that southbound left turn lane.
Okay, and could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry about that. John Donaldson, 127734 Still Boulevard, Wellington.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Mr. Fields?
Yes. Softly traffic with you in that area, but.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for staff? Board Member Fields, any other questions?
No.
Okay, and Board Member Barlow, I don't think I've gotten to you yet, correct?
Staff did an excellent job. No questions, thank you.
Okay, and just from my perspective, I don't know that this affects the waivers, really. It just, I think it just relates to one of the amenities that the applicant identified they were providing. They, they were noting the path, the pathway that they're providing along the eastern edge of the site, along the canal over there. As it stands, then it looks like it would just, you know, extend to the north end of their property and stub out. It doesn't look like there's anything to connect to. Does staff have a ultimate, is there a ultimate master plan for connectivity among those parcels?
Yes, I answered. Step up. No, right now, no. I mean, that's something, every time we get a development, it's a long canal or a lake, we try to implement it. At this time, there is no overall master plan per se. But if we figures, we start here because it's at the end, as we go forward, maybe we can get some behind the other commercial properties.
Sure, okay. So the plan is then, as other part, adjacent parcels redevelop, they would make similar connections to this path?
Yes.
That's the plan?
That's the ultimate goal.
Okay, that's good to know. I think a good, a good, I think, ultimate plan for, and provides a another alternative for other modes of travel. Okay, I had no other questions for staff. So we'll turn it over now to the, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Ask the moderator if there are any members of the public that are, they're either in person or virtually, or if we've received written or video correspondence.
Mr. Chair, I have not received any interest for public comment.
Okay. Seeing that, then we will close the public comment and move into board executive discussion. So I'll start off with Board Member Wood. Any comments or discussion?
No comments.
Okay, Board Member Fields?
No further comments.
Okay, Board Member Barlow?
No comments, thank you.
And Board Member Hyman?
No comments, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, I also have no additional comments. So at this point, we'll go ahead and entertain motion from the board.
I move that the zoning board of appeals grant the waiver with ZBA case number 3382 as listed in the staff report dated April 1, 2021. The motion is based upon the determination of testimony presented at the hearing along with the application submitted constitute a preponderance of competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that the waiver requested satisfies all the criterias of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article II, Section 94-36 and Article 9, Section 94-273A-2.
Great, that's been, the motion's been made by more, Board Member Fields. Is there a second?
Second. Mr. Wood?
Okay, seconded by Board Member Wood. And I will note, I think there was just a general condition in the staff report that said all the recommendations made subject to the following conditions, and that is, all the conditions of approval for informal site plan review case number 2104 shall be satisfied. So I believe that was incorporated in the motion, so just noting that for the record. Are there any objections to the applicant with, with that condition? I don't think we had asked that before.
No, there is none.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. So I'll ask the Board Secretary to please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Michael Barlow?
Yes.
Michael Hyman?
Yes.
Michael Wood?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
The motion passed as five to zero.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Good luck. So that concludes this, this portion of the agenda. And we'll move on, looking at, at the next item on the agenda. That would be administrative appeals, or there are none on our agenda today. No unfinished business, no new business or other business. So with that, we will all accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Hagan? Oh, do we have to approve both the waiver and the special use permit separately? They are listed separately. Just want to make sure before we end.
Yeah, there should, there should have been two motions.
Yes.
And two votes.
I missed that. Yes, I apologize. So.
First would be the waiver and then the Class B special use permit.
Yeah, and, and the motion that was made was for the waiver, and I apologize, I missed the special use permit. So I'll entertain a motion for the granting of the special use permit.
Here, I move that the zoning board of appeals grant application number 3382, a request by Ellie Zacharias of Dunay, Miskel, and Bachman LLP on behalf of Selfish Real Estate LLC for a Class B special use permit to allow a convenience store with a fast food component accessory motor vehicle fuel cells to locate within the neighborhood commercial zoning district. The motion is based upon the testimony presented along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that each of the criteria in Section 94-36 dot E dot three and four, and also the standards in Section 94-273 dot D dot 12 and Section 94-273 dot A dot two of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations have been met.
Okay.
And just to clarify, the conditions of approval should be associated with the special use permit, not the waiver.
Not the waiver. Yes, thank you. So, and we're, and I don't think we proposed a revision to those. So I think we're okay with that. And so my apologies again for, for missing that. Thank you, Mr. Fields, for noticing. And, and yes, my comment earlier about the conditions were tied to the special use permit, not the waiver that we voted upon. So the second was from whom? Board Member Wood. So the motion's been made by Board Member Field, seconded by Board Member Wood. I'll ask our Board Secretary to please call the roll.
Mr. Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Michael Wood?
Yes.
Michael Hyman?
Yes.
Michael Barlow?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes. Okay. That then concludes the item two on our agenda. And as noted previously, we had no administrative appeals, no unfinished. And as noted previously, we had no administrative appeals, no unfinished business, no new business or other business. So at this point, I'll take a, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I so move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Board Member Barlow and seconded by Board Member Hyman, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. I hope everyone has a good, good month and see you in May if we've got some cases.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Take care, everyone, thank you.
Take care.